Now it is.
Uh, please, Commissioner Malia, would you lead us in the invocation?
Yes, sir, thank you. Y'all bow your heads with me. Lord, thank you for this beautiful day and this beautiful county that we live in. Be with us today as we do the county's business and make decisions that affect ourselves, our neighbors, our community. Some of these decisions are difficult, but please help us to make these votes and decisions in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Do I want to send a pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, God visible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have a quorum with four members present. Y'all have had a chance to approve the, uh, go over the previous meeting's minutes. Can I get a motion for approval?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Series four. All right, Mr. Johnson, are we, uh, good with the agenda?
I believe it's ready for your approval, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. See if we have any special recognition or presentations. Go down to the consent agenda. These items have gone before the committee, individual committees, and if you are still in favor with all of them, we can prove them all with one motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right. Coming down to the new business, and the first item is the appeal of the Planning Commission decision of RZ 23-0206, minor PUD revision. 777 Jones Creek, tax map 0778, parcel 731. Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
How are you?
I'm great, how you doing?
I'm doing fine. Um, if it pleases y'all, I've got three folks that are gonna talk, including myself. Uh, one will be Trip Nanny, he's the president of the HOA. Another will be Mr. Hamad Sheik, an owner in the Jones Creek, homeowner. And then I'll up with some remarks.
Okay, can I get your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. Wendell Johnston, 731 Oberlin Road, Augusta, Georgia, 30909.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Please name and address for the record.
Commissioners and residents, uh, my name's Trip Nanny, 4113 Heritage Ridge, Evans, Georgia. I'm speaking as president of Jones Creek HOA on behalf of our 579 homeowners and approximately 1,200 Columbia County voters. First of all, I'd like to ask any of these residents in Columbia County behind me that are in favor of this PUD revision to raise their hand. Got one, that's more than we've had in two meetings. Next, I'd like to ask any Columbia County resident opposed to this PUD revision to raise their hand. And I ask you to keep your hand raised if you're a Columbia County voter. So we've got your people here. Uh, in our recent survey in our neighborhood, 619 votes returned. Ninety-eight percent of our residents are against revising the PUD for the clubhouse at Jones Creek. Why? Well, we've got a golf course that's been closed for three years, and we currently have a group working to reopen the driving range with plans to open the entire golf course. This group, Bond Golf Global, has indicated without the clubhouse, their ability to successfully reopen the golf course will be in jeopardy. Let's just say they don't open the course. Why is allowing a full-time restaurant, bar, and hospitality business good for the residents of Jones Creek? What do the residents of Jones Creek want? We want exactly what we got when we purchased our homes, for the governing PUD to be maintained the same way it has been for 35 years. Is there another residential neighborhood in Columbia County that has a hospitality house and a full-time restaurant right in the middle of it? I don't think so. This potential model has no upside for our residents, and it starts a dangerous precedent. What we don't want are concessions to any entity that chips away at the current PUD. We've heard over and over again, "Don't worry, Jones Creek, we're not gonna allow any rezoning without your overwhelming approval." All of a sudden, that's turned into, "Well, we meant rezoning for development." We've heard from Columbia County officials that this applicant, the owner of the clubhouse, has rights and needs to be protected too. Well, he was protected when he bought the building, and he continues to be protected by the PUD that governs it. If this one piece is changed, our PUD begins to crumble. Not today, not next week, maybe not even on this commission's watch. But eventually, the golf property owner will realize that without a clubhouse, there's gonna be no golf course. What are his options? Will his rights be protected too? How will the Columbia County answer when he wants to rezone that property in order to sell it? It may start with just the driving range, which is flat, easily hold 50 homes. After that, current homeowners, you've gotta beware. The parcels will start to be gobbled up by others for purposes we have no idea. There's access to buildable land without even entering Jones Creek. The first little PUD revision gives way to potential development, whether this board of commissioners will admit it or not. Without the clubhouse, any golf operator will require a new golf cart storage and some type of structure to handle their golf operations. In addition, they would need to greatly increase parking for their players and guests. Without a new building, which would reduce the land available for those activities, they would have no food and beverage revenue. One and only one person wins if you allow this modification. The applicant wins, the Jones Creek residents lose. One winner and over 1,000 Columbia County taxpaying voters lose. It's extremely disappointing that their request is now being considered minor revision to the PUD when in fact, not one word from the original narrative was changed, not one word. Should we believe that this can't or will not happen in other Columbia County neighborhoods? I don't see why not. Just like most anything, after it happens once, the precedent is set and becomes easy the next time. Little by little, piece by piece, a great neighborhood could be changed forever. Not one person purchasing a house in Jones Creek expected our clubhouse to become anything like this entity. Our residents, your Columbia County taxpaying voters, are overwhelmingly against this application to revise the Jones Creek PUD for property right in the middle of our neighborhood. A venue that says it's gonna be open from 6:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. every day. Sixteen and a half hours every day of the year in the middle of a residential neighborhood, that's not gonna enhance anybody's property values. Are our residents really being asked to stand by and accept that this building will be empty by 11 o'clock every night? We will have, will we have adequate parking to get to our pool and our tennis courts, areas that we have perpetual easements to? We negotiated in good faith with the applicant and in fact, offered him a substantial monthly sum to assist with parking lot maintenance as required by the original limited warranty deed. He didn't mention that in his interviews. The applicant and current owner of the clubhouse purchased the property for $22.20 a square foot, clearly a discounted price. He knew it was governed by the Jones Creek PUD when he purchased it? If he was worried, why didn't he get it rezoned then? The property owner, Julian Saw, says he backed out of a deal to buy the entire property the night before it was supposed to close. I'm not sure if you've been to Jones Creek lately, but like much of Columbia County, we've gotten younger. Maybe not me, but our neighborhood's gotten younger. Our demographics have changed due to, you know it, our schools, our location, and our perceived value in our neighborhood. Young people with children that like to play outside continue to move into Jones Creek. Even if somehow there are no intoxicated drivers roaming our quiet streets when this hospitality bar business will be open? Uh, can't imagine anything going wrong with that, can you? 11 o'clock at night? So why are we here? We care about preserving our neighborhood under the PUD and keeping things the way they've always been since Jones Creek was originally developed. You're not just changing the hours of operation, you're approving everything included in the staff report, including a restaurant with or without a golf pro shop and other golf operations. I see that the new owner, that, well, the applicant is here, the new owner's not here. We think he should've been here to answer questions at the planning meeting. One of the planning commissioners that voted actually has business interests with him, financial dealings with the applicants, and we find that to be highly irregular. Seemed like a conflict of interest to us. As a 24-year resident of Jones Creek, I urge you to oppose this application and vote no to revising the Jones Creek PUD for 777 Jones Creek Drive. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Hamad Sheik, I live at 755 Jones Creek Drive and have lived there since I was six months old. Trip talked about this a little bit, but I wanna go back to the commission meeting that we were here about, about a month ago. And really why we're here today is about the appeal of that decision. One of the commissioners at that meeting asked the question, "Why?" Why were we here? Why were we only talking about the hours of operation and trash can? Why were the homeowners behind me so upset about the change of operation of hours in a trash pickup? And the answer is simple, because that's not what this was about. When the applicant made the application originally, Commissioners, he made it as a revision of the PUD. He withdrew that revision. And then he signed, he did another petition for the exact same thing, stating that all he is doing is changing the hours of operation and when the trash is gonna get picked up. But more importantly, Commissioners, what he still said in that petition was that the property was going to be used for a event hospitality, meeting space, meeting space, restaurant space, catering space, and kitchen. That's not what that clubhouse was meant for, used for, and is needed for. That clubhouse is part of a planned unit development, as everyone knows here. The fact of the matter is, is that is a golf clubhouse. And that golf clubhouse has fundamentally different proponents to it than a restaurant, a catering space, and anything like that. Trip talked about that just a second ago, that for a clubhouse to exist, a golf clubhouse to exist, a good golf clubhouse to exist, you need golf carts, golf cart storage. You have that at that clubhouse. You need a pro shop. You have that at this clubhouse. You need locker rooms. You have that at this clubhouse. If this petition, when the commissioners, the Planning and Zoning Commission agreed to change the hours, they implicitly agreed to what this petition stated. And so what you allowed, what, I apologize, what the Planning and Zoning Commission allowed is to change all of that. To change the pro shop to more seating area, to change a locker room into a bigger kitchen, to change the golf cart storage to more storage for food and all of that. The fact of the matter is, is that in front of you today is the appeal of that decision, because that decision was wrong. And while some people wanna vilify all of these individuals, the fact of the matter is, is that's not why I'm here. I just know that it's wrong. I know that that clubhouse is meant to be a clubhouse, meant to be a golf clubhouse, and that this petition, once again, mirrors the petition to revise the PUD, to rezone the PUD into an S1. And that the petition to change the hours was the exact same. And so in front of all the commissioners, in front of the voting majority here today, you need to accept the appeal as it is and deny the request by the applicant. Because it is a golf clubhouse, and the PUD only asks for it to be a golf clubhouse. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the Commissioners at this time as well.
Questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I will be the last and probably the most brief.
We had one more person that signed up, if it's okay with you, Jane Toller?
Air appeal.
If, if, if you're okay with that, Mr. Johnson?
I'm fine, if she wants to speak.
You'd like?
Okay. This PUD has been changed over the years, but it's never been changed appropriately. There's never been the proper procedure to change this PUD. And, um, the procedure that has been used is, is a procedure that's known as a minor revision procedure. And that is a loophole that allows someone to ask for a minor revision that doesn't change the PUD. And when they ask for it, they don't have to advertise it, they don't have to give the public notice, they don't have to have a public hearing. If you change the PUD and you don't have those procedures in place, you violate the Columbia County Code and you violate state law. The PUD requires, um, I know that the homeowners association and the people of Jones Creek want it to be a pro shop, but it's not a want or desire, it is a requirement. It is a requirement in the PUD, which has never been changed appropriately. The PUD provides that the Jones Creek Golf Club will be a pro shop and will provide for the sale of merchandise, golf and recreational activity and services. That's its only use. That's never been changed appropriately. It's never been changed through section 90-180 of the Columbia County Code, and that's, is used when you change a PUD, you're changing the zoning. And when you change the zoning, got to be advertised, got to be a public hearing, and there's got to be notice. That hadn't been done in this case. So procedurally, this application has to be denied. If it is not denied, it is violating the Columbia County Code. And for that matter, it would also be violating Georgia law. The Georgia zoning procedural law, and that's found in OCGA section 36-66-1, requires at a minimum, when you make a zoning change, that there has to be public notice and advertisement. That has not been done with this application. It wasn't done in the past applications where somehow this pro shop in the back room somewhere, rather than in a, in a public forum, somehow was, was, was transformed into a catering shop and now is being transformed into a restaurant and a potential hospitality, uh, place for, I guess, masters rentals and, and, and that sort of thing. You can't do it. If this application moves forward, the code is violated, the Columbia County Code is violated because section 90-180 hadn't been followed, Georgia zoning procedure law has not been followed, and this is subject to an appeal, it's annulity. And the courts, I believe, would find it to be annulity because the, the procedural laws that are required under the code and under the state code have not been followed. So for those reasons, this petition has to be denied. It's annulity. And I certainly appreciate it. If y'all have any questions for me, you can let me know. All right, thank you.
Please state your name, for the record.
Um, good evening. My name is June Toller. Please understand my pronunciation, so, um, I gotta be just ready, I was just quickly prepared for myself for the, uh, I am a resident of 709 Jones Creek. I moved to this community two weeks before the golf course closed without any notification. First, I want to thank God for the opening of this meeting. I use His name, so I am responsible for it. Because in God we trust, which is printed on all our money. I think this is all about money. Every, I look at a penny too, every single money has in, in God we trust. And I believe that is the love of money that brings me here today. During the last committee meeting, the development planners seems like they are working for one person, a developer, instead of for the Jones Creek community. I am asking you, Commissioners, to do what is right for our community. Last, I believe what the Bible says, "You shall not misuse the name of the Lord your God; for the Lord will not hold anyone, Gittanas who misuse His name." Therefore, I am responsible to use His name. I hope you recognize we are all responsible. Thank you for the listening to my testimony.
Mr. Johnson, or do you have anything else to add, or?
Oh, sorry.
This time, I'll accept the motion.
Um, I would like to make a motion to overturn the Planning Commission decision on RZ 23-0206.
Have a second? Second? Motion to ask, for lack of a second. Next item?
Member comes.
Chair, I believe I have the next item. I'll wait a minute.
Red?
Uh, next item, file RZ 23-0302. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from R1 to R2 for a portion of tax map 065A, parcel 295.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay, so this concerns really two parcels. So you have the parcel on Hardy Point, which is, uh, R2, and then you have the parcel that it butts against, which is R1. The property in question is that piece right here. It is, it's part of an existing drainage and utility easement. And the request is to rezone that and transfer it to the Hardy Point property. So that would, uh, eliminate that property line and move it down here. You want, it needs to be rezoned, because if you don't, then you're gonna have a parcel with, uh, split zoning, which we want to avoid. And the other thing that it does, it, uh, moves this property line further back so that this homeowner is able to put a pool in that area without, uh, requiring variance for something.
Questions, comment? All in favor, raise your right hand. Series four.
Next item, Mr. Chair, is VA 23-0301. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section 90-53, uh, list of lot and structural requirements, property located at tax map 057A, parcel 063, to reduce the rear setback, building setback closest to the house from 25 feet to 15 feet to accommodate the existing home and proposed front porch.
Second.
Sir, in this case, it's interesting, because this is already a non-conforming property. Uh, it's supposed to have 25-foot setbacks, it only has an eight, it currently has an 18. The homeowner wants to put that proposed front porch in, which will further reduce the setback to 15 feet. Uh, so in order to do that, the, we're gonna, we're gonna need to reduce the side setback to 15.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Four, zero.
Uh, next item, file VA 23-0302. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section 90-147I3, use provisions for property located at tax map 077A, parcel 011G, to allow a drive-through window in lanes between a public street and the building subject to the condition noted in the March 2nd, 2023 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
Second.
Sir, in this case, uh, just as I said, this is to put a drive-through lane in, uh, I believe that's Liquorland, and it has a pickup window. The lanes will actually be striped. Will require a baller to be removed, and I believe there's also some water meters that will need to be removed. Well, the only concern with this is because it's between a building and a public road is that you have, uh, a proper buffer, which, the buffer that already exists is sufficient, but I believe there were other conditions put in force that, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we have the condition on there to make sure the buffer will remain regardless of things.
Is the applicant with us today? Mr. Patel, would you come forward? I got just a couple of quick questions for you.
Would you state your name and address for the record, sir?
Dee Patel, 646 Emerald Crossing, Evans.
Thank you, I just wanted to, you know, uh, we just spoke briefly about the, the trees that are the buffer right there. You understand the expectation that those trees will stay, have to stay, and will shield the, the road view of, from your building and your drive-through?
Yes, ma'am.
You don't have any intention of, of removing any of that buffer?
We are, we haven't touched it, and we don't plan on touching it.
Now, do you own this building, or are you a tenant?
We don't, we're a tenant, we, uh, if you look on the, the, um, drawing right there, we own the-
You can draw on it, Dee, you can draw on it with your finger on the frame.
Yeah, um, basically this whole piece right here. Um, and the reason we need a drive-through, we have a lot of elder customers and handicap customers, and, um, with our recent expansion, it's a, a much more of a walk than it used to be, um, for some of those customers. So it saves us a lot of hassle, and it makes us feel better to be able to just give it to them through a drive-through.
And does your landlord understand that that buffer is a condition of you being able to operate with that, with that window there?
Yes, ma'am, we have, uh, very good relationships with him, and, um, he is on board of, you know, making sure we do whatever we have to to get this.
So, so you understand if he removes the trees because they're his trees, that it would affect your building?
Yes, sir, we, we won't let those trees be moved.
Okay. All I have, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion is second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Series four, zero. Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Think you're up?
I have one more. I make a motion to authorize the county manager to choose the most appropriate firm to conduct a government efficiency and functionality study, and to fund, to fund this study for an amount not to exceed $100,000, and to authorize the chairman to execute the associated documents needed to accomplish this task.
Second.
Second, Mr. Johnson, would you kinda step speed on this one a little bit?
Yes, sir, this is a authorization to allow us to move forward with a, a study, or actually asking for a study to be done, uh, to really determine the pros and the cons of incorporation and consolidation among other, um, efficiencies, efficiency and functionality items. This is the first step in a long process, I know there's been a lot of discussion about this, but, um, there are several- I know there's been a lot of discussion about this, but there are several ways to go about incorporation and consolidation. And I know it's been tried in Columbia County before, prior to my tenure. But one way would be to just simply ask the, the, any of our legislators to introduce a bill to allow for incorporation and consolidation. And we could have asked that to happen this session and they could have moved forward with that legislation and had it passed, then the next step would be to put the item on the ballot to let the voters vote. I think this body thought that it would be in the better interest of the citizens to at least perform a study first to see if this body was even willing to ask the legislature to move forward with that sort of action. We've also been in brief conversations with our two incorporated cities, the mayors of our two incorporated cities and the managers of those cities. But there's a lot more discussion to be had. I think that, that this study will tell us the pros and the cons of, of incorporation and consolidation. It may uncover some additional efficiencies and functionalities. And then if, if it does tell us that we should move forward with it, it'll give us the path forward. It'll, it'll tell us exactly how this must be done. It has to be done according to the state constitution. This particular path has never been done before in Georgia. There's never been a time that I know of that a county has incorporated their unincorporated area and then turned around and consolidated at the same time. Typically, incorporation and consolidation is done when there's one city that would incorporate the unincorporated areas, which is allowed. This is not prohibited by the constitution, but it's not specifically allowed. So there is a reason to have experts perform this study to be able to give us those, those opinions. I'm not a, y'all know I'm not a fan of social media. I follow very little social media, but every once in a while, somebody will send something to me. And I know that there's been some discussion on social media about, you know, why don't we just get the Carl Vincent Institute to do it for free? Or maybe there's some indication out there that we already have somebody lined up. I want to go on record tonight to say that number one, I've reached out to the Carl Vincent Institute and they don't have anyone on staff to be able to perform this type of study. So we cannot use the Carl Vincent Institute unless they get someone on staff. I will also go on record and say that I have not chosen anybody to, to perform this study. And if we go through this process, if you authorize this tonight, we will go through the proper channels to make sure that we interview all of the potential candidates, people that can perform the study. And then we will try to get the most bang for our buck, as we do with, with every situation. And then the last thing that I want to stress to the board is, like I said before, this could have been done with just introducing legislation and letting the citizens vote on it, but instead, the board has decided to do the study first. This study will take approximately eight months. We have the timeframe for completion for the end of this calendar year. Once this study is done, I think what it will do is it will open the opportunity for discussion, further discussion in our community. And I could see us having open forums and citizen discussion groups and maybe some special panels that the board may want to put together. Certainly more discussions with the cities and more discussions with our citizens at large, just to see if it's something that they want to do. And, and then and only then, if it's the will of this board to ask for such legislation to be introduced, it would be introduced. It would then have to pass both the House and the Senate. Then it'd have to be signed by the governor. And if it was, all those things were done, all that would do was get it in front of the voters. This is the beginning of what I would consider to be probably a three-year process. And at any time we see, or you see, that this is not the direction that we need to go, we can certainly change direction, change gears, and, and not go this way. This is far from being a done deal, as far from being rammed down anyone's throat. There are certainly some pros that we are aware of that, that would, county could benefit from incorporation and consolidation as it relates to the financial stability of the county moving forward. There are a few cons that we can think of that, that I think we need to be explored. And at the end of the day, the citizens of Columbia County get to decide. So with that, I will answer any questions that any of the board have.
Any questions from anybody?
Just the study.
Well, I agree, and I, for one, own it of, I think for long term, this will be the best thing for Columbia moving forward. Now, if the study comes back and says that that is not the case, I'm 100% in favor to, to disband or, or not even move forward with citizen group, whatever. Is if we can move this forward and we see that it's going to benefit long-term county in the future, I think we would be a disservice not to explore these options for our community.
And we've talked to the mayors of the cities and assured them that, that they would be part of this entire process and, and the study. And I would like to also say that I'd like to review the questions that are on the study and who was spoken with and, and different issues that will be studied on it. So I'm not 100% comfortable with it yet.
Absolutely.
But I, I do want to make sure that I go on record to say that, you know, assured the mayors they'll be involved in the process.
I will keep the board informed as we move forward and keep you all informed as we start looking at the different firms that have the ability and capability to do this. And we will make sure that the, that the board is apprised every step of the way. If there's any questions along the way, certainly we'll answer those.
Very much. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes three to one. Mr. Driver, do we have any legal matters this evening?
No legal matters.
Any public comments? Public comment? A couple of executive session items that we can handle right here. So I'll make a motion to approve $2,900 to John Hutchinson, tax map 060075, $4,700 to Soto Properties LLC, tax map 067A001, $4,976 to the Sparks Way LLC, tax map 060007, $4,300 to Joan Hutchinson, tax map 060004D, $3,100 to Joan Hutchinson, tax map 060003A, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hurford Farm Road widening project.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero. I make a motion to approve $7,600 to Andrew and Jerry Taylor, tax map 071004S, $3,100 to Philip and Sue Heath, tax map 071004V, to obtain right-of-way and/or easement for the Hardy McManus Road widening project.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes four zero. We have one motion left.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.